Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Covington's special meeting with the Covington City Council Joint Study Session with the Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 22. This city council's special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. And with that, I will call this study session to order, and I think let's just go around the room and introduce ourselves to make it. Is that easier for you, Krista?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll start with the Planning Commission, and let's start with Murray.
Hi, well, I'm Murray Williams. I'm currently the Chair of the Covington Planning Commission. I've been on the commission for about five years now, and that's, that's me.
Welcome, Murray. Jennifer Gilbert Smith.
Jennifer Gilbert Smith with the Planning Commission, and Murray, you shouldn't have mentioned years because then I just laugh. I'm like, okay, there's been I can't remember now. It's been a long time. I think it's been eight.
Welcome, Jennifer. Darren.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Darren Growth. I've been on the commission now for one year.
Welcome. Chelsea.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Thorne. I think I'm the latest member of the commission, and I've been on maybe about five, six months.
Welcome. I think I got all the planning commissioners. Let's go to council. I'll start on my left here, Joe.
Joe Smomo, council, starting my third term. So this is your, starting year nine for me.
Christina.
Christina Saltis started my third year in my first term. Nice to see you all.
Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Harderhausen on council. Um, maybe almost four years if Christina's starting her third. I'm not sure, honestly, but a few years.
Sean.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Sean Smith. I'm on the council as well, and I've been on a little over seven years.
Beth.
Yeah, Beth Porter, and I've been on council for about a year and a half.
Thank you. Jared.
Jared Copel, same as Christina. Been on council for three years now, and yeah.
Thank you. Selena.
Did you want me to kick us off or do an introduction?
Oh, do introduction, sorry. I'll go through staff now, sorry.
It was like, oh, staff. Okay, hi, everyone. The Lions Director, been back for three or four months now. I can't remember.
Thanks, Selena. Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. I am Ryan Herrman, the Planning Manager at the City of Covington, so I'm not on a commission and I'm not on council, so.
Krista.
Krista Bates, City Clerk and Executive Assistant.
Regan.
Evening, everybody. Regan Bolley, City Manager.
I believe that is everybody. I am your mayor, Jeff Wagner, and I've been on council for quite a number of years and enjoyed every year of it, so I appreciate that. And I believe I've got everybody. If I missed anybody, my apologies. I see everybody. So now I'll turn it over to you, Selena, and it's all yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council members and commissioners. Um, we've got a little bit of a presentation tonight for you, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for, for making time for the Planning Commission, for the council, for each other in this space today. Um, the Planning Commissions, we've got a, we've got a work plan ahead of us that we're excited to share with you. Um, and we're really hopeful, just to kind of maybe set the tone. Um, I was letting the Planning Commission know this was kind of a pretty casual, interactive opportunity to interact with fellow citizens and our council members in those different capacities we have. So my, my hope is that we can have some great dialogue today, answer questions, kind of get to know a little bit more about each other and our roles on, on our respective commissions and councils, and then also kind of the look ahead of what 2020 has in store for us. So, um, we've got about an 11 to 12 page slide, slide deck um, that we'll present tonight. Um, and then obviously I will do my best to kind of also look to if there's any questions. Um, I think we can just have an open dialogue throughout this, if that works for you, Mayor. Okay, great, thank you. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. Bear with me here for one second. Can I get a thumbs up from you, Mayor, that you see this? Awesome, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and hand this over to Ryan, and then for the commissioners, just go ahead and say next slide, and I'll, I'll progress to the next one.
Well, thank you, Selena. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ryan Herrman, Community Development Department. So this evening, we're going to be providing you with a brief overview of the 2022 Planning Commission work plan. The slide that you have in front of you is not the same slide I'm seeing on my slide deck. This is the, this is the Planning Commission uh, Joint City Council meeting. We're going to be reviewing and discussing the, the Planning Commission work plan. Uh, what you'll be hearing this evening, you'll, they'll have a presentation from, you know, the planning commissioners and from staff. You'll have an intro deduction of who the Planning Commission members are. Uh, we'll be talking about the 2022 Planning Commission work plan, the, the why and the what, the reasons why we're doing these things. We'll talk briefly about the 2022 work plan activities, and from there, we'll talk about the work plan in, in further detail and then have some discussion and feedback time. And at that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Williams.
Okay, so good evening, everybody again, and so what you have here is the list of the current members of the Covington City Planning Commission. Put together a cool little word cloud of some of the things that kind of gave a little bit more depth of, of who's on the Planning Commission and the viewpoints they're coming from and, and possibly even a little bit about why they're involved. And basically, we consider ourselves, according to the law, uh, an independent seven-member board appointed by the council, and our job is to provide long-term perspective on comprehensive planning for the city. Uh, as you probably know, we meet the first and third Thursday of every month. Uh, sometimes we only meet once a month, but we always meet at least once a month. So, um, if you'd like, uh, we can kind of go around and give each of the commissioners a little bit of time to give you a little bit more background on themselves, or we can move on, whichever you would prefer to do.
I will leave it in your hands. You are running this meeting.
All righty, well, then I will, I will continue. Um, are there any of the commissioners that would like to, to provide a little bit more depth into why they're on the commission and what they're hoping to accomplish here? And if not, oh, go ahead. I heard somebody.
Well, if it's open, this is Commissioner Growth. I'd like the opportunity.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, I, I, prior to the appointment, again, it was about a year ago. I kind of missed this opportunity last year. I worked for a different city. We have our city council meetings on Tuesdays as well, so scheduling staff who I got in for about two minutes in last meeting. But I had just been appointed to the Planning Commission after moving from the CEDIS, and I've lived in Covington about three and a half years. I've tried to find a way to volunteer my time pretty much ever since moving here. But I really enjoy the opportunity. I like hearing from Selena and Ryan and all the efforts that are happening. I, I sought out the opportunity to live in Covington, you know, moving here from a different state, tried to find a place that just made sense and looking at, I live next to that planned Oak Point Development, Lake Point. And that was kind of important for me, so I, I like the opportunity to kind of be in the know of what's happening and what's going on, and I try to attend council meetings when I get the opportunity. Yours often run longer than ours. Uh, so I can kind of jump in there, but, uh, yeah, the Planning Commission and the city council and how they work together and what the vision is. Uh, I, I, I am on the commission to try to help all of that. I serve on my HOA board as an opportunity to kind of take information from both the neighborhood and maybe liet is with the staff or with the city, and then take information from the city and share it with, with the neighborhood. And I just, I enjoy that, so I appreciate the opportunity like tonight to even you know, have that open, Murray, by jumping in and saying why we're here. Uh, I think why we're all here is how can we better the city? How can, how can Covington forward? And how can we learn from each other what it is, ways that, you know, we may inform your decision-making, or we may even help that, or uh, we may be a resource, or you can help us set that vision. So for tonight with the 2020, 20, 2022 work plan, uh, I just think that's the appropriate opportunity to take that time to have the discussions. I don't know if that's really what you're looking for, Murray, but.
Yeah, no, that was exactly what I was looking for, so.
All right, thanks.
I couldn't have said it better, and you definitely captured all the points that I would have made, so thank you very much for that, Darren. Uh, let's see, so I guess with that, we'll move on to the next slide. And so we, as I said, we consider ourselves, or we are, an advisory body required under state law, RCW 3563, and we're tasked with providing a long-term community perspective to land use policy and are responsible for maintaining accessible process that informs and educates the public. Uh, I know that I get a lot of queries from friends and people that I know in the, in the city about what's going on with it, and so as Darren said, I really enjoy kind of filling in in this, this glue part or this middle ground between the public and the council. So the Planning Commission has two distinct functions. Uh, we're preparing and revising the city's comprehensive planned and land use regulations related to zoning. Uh, that includes formal review via public hearing process on comprehensive zoning maps, uh, zoning code changes in sub areas that are adopted by reference into the comprehensive plan and providing a recommendation to the city council for consideration. Um, a few things the Planning Commission does not do is advise, recommend, or decide on active land use applications or regulations where authority is specifically granted directly to the city council or other commissions or departments. Um, so we're kind of interested in as a group, because we discussed this at our meeting last week, to kind of get a feel from the council on how you view your planning commission and, uh, you know, what you think of what's been going on and, and where you might be interested in seeing things go. So if anybody on the council has, uh, anything they'd like to share to help us understand or my, manage our mission, that would be great. And it looks like Mayor Pro Tem Smith. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. I thought I was muted, but I wasn't. Um, no, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with all the commission members here and, and the council. I guess my two cents on, on the Planning Commission is that it serves as our additional set of eyes and ears uh, out there in the community on, uh, looking and taking in information on issues that impact the, the ability to, to plan and, and manage and, and grow our city. So uh, we look to all of you to, to do some of the intensive research and, and deep dive into some of these issues, uh, and then debate that and then bring that to us, um, so that we can make informed decisions um, on, you know, the future development of our, of our community. So, um, I really do appreciate the, the Planning Commission's work. It, it you know, all of our commissions do, uh, great work and are valuable, um, but the Planning Commission, I, I often feel like does incredibly significant, um, amount of work and the detail and, and the importance of it is, is really helpful to everything we do on the council, so. You know, things going forward, uh, I think it, it's, it hasn't really changed. I mean, our, our, our community in our region is growing, you know, and we're going to have to continue to manage that growth in a way. And I remember when I first got on the Planning Commission, gosh, when was that, like 2009, I want to say? Um, that was the, the issue we were hearing is, you know, the community's growing too fast. It's, you know, basically impacting the very things that I moved here in the first place. You know, and you fast forward to 2022, and you're hearing the exact same thing. So how do we, how do we manage, uh, the development and plan for our community, uh, and make it a welcoming place? Uh, all while making sure we preserve and protect the things that people come here for in the first place. Um, if we start to destroy those things, then we're obviously not doing, doing our job correctly. So that's kind of in a nutshell when I see the role of the Planning Commission is, and I appreciate all your, your work, so thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I know a couple of things that we've worked on in the last couple of years that, that directly feed into what you're saying there are the tree code uh, and the form-based code, which I think both will have, uh, obviously, the tree code already has uh, a pretty significant impact on keeping the city the way a lot of people do want it. Uh, and I think the form-based code will, you know, make it a very livable, walkable uh, city as that, you know, continues to come forward, so that's great. Uh, anyone else? Would anyone else like to provide their thoughts or input? I don't see any other hands. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Nope, uh, there's council member Porter.
Thank you, Murray. I just wanted to echo what, uh, what, uh, what Sean said. Uh, being on the count, um, Planning Commission myself as well, as you all know, I mean, working together, the work that's, that you all do is there's a lot of legal implications. There's a lot of detail-oriented things that need to be looked at and having, having um, that additional vetting from the Planning Commission, I think is extremely important and also you know, providing that outreach that you all do with, uh, the community through the public comment period and, uh, you know, sometimes you'll have hearings uh, and even just your role in the communities when you're out, uh, discussing things, being the uh, additional boots on the ground, uh, to help provide that perspective, super important in, in the topics that you all are faced with. And I know you put a lot of work into doing the research, so it's certainly appreciated by everyone on the council, I know, and in the staff, too.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Growth.
Yes, thanks. If, if I can ask a follow-up question to that. Uh, what I hear, uh, from Mayor Pro Tem Smith saying that, you know, there's that opportunity, there's, there's that balance, right, between uh, we moved here and we don't want to see anything change, like, hey, this is a little slice of heaven. We're here. Uh, don't, don't come and change it. Uh, you know, I may have just been here for five years, but it's the people after me that are making the change, or I might have been here for 10 years, and it's the people after that that are making the change. Uh, we all have some version of that, uh, that can possibly play out. How do, how do you balance the ability for somebody to come into Covington? Uh, whether it's in one of the new apartments they're moving in, or I, you know, bought a home that was a new subdivision. I moved, I moved in, just my own example, because of some of the things that are happening, right? I'm not going to say wow, the city of Covington is, is off course by making the Covington connection, or possibly widening 516 or adding Lake Point or the new sub-area plan for downtown. Those are all exciting to me and things that I would like in the community. How do you balance that between what is there, what is coming, and who provides that input to you for what vision that you are looking to see? Uh, just filled out a pros plan as an example. I think that was a great opportunity. Are there more of those, or are there ways that the Planning Commission can help inform those two different Friedrich Feiner debate kind of questions?
Are you looking to me to, for an answer, or the rest of the council, too?
Well, I'd appreciate anybody. I'll look to you first, though.
Okay.
Well, before we go on, I just want to make sure we, I know we're getting into a discussion, but I want to make sure we have enough time to get through the presentation as well. So I'm not sure, Selene, if we want to go, I know you wanted to have this as open, so I just wanted to make sure where we're going with this.
Yeah, I, um, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm kind of watching that. This was also a, this is if, if possible, could we give this maybe like two minutes, this, this conversation? And the reason why that I'm asking this is that the Planning Commission and prepping for this, we kind of had these internal conversations on Thursday, and even in my one-on-ones with them. Um, and so it's okay, you know, if we can, if we can just wrap that up in like a minute or two, and if we need to, we can, we can put a pin in it and come back to it if we have to at, at the end as well.
Uh, well, in the interest of being fair, I'll let some other council members speak then that haven't, haven't spoken yet.
Okay, well, Councilmember Saltis has her hand up.
I will be quick, um, but, and there's, I wish there was like a magic answer that just, you know, fit and checked off every box. Um, since the beginning of time, the world has been evolving. It's not Covington that's been evolving. It's and it's happened all over the world, and what we see happening in Washington isn't, isn't new, and what we see happening in Covington isn't new. Um, I don't think we can reinvent the wheel, but and, and this is just a holistic approach of mine. Um, I just think that it would be in everyone's best interest if we did our, just our best in listening to how we want this change and to swing into the direction of which this change goes. Change will happen. I mean, we're gonna, we're, we're growing in people. The, the world has eight, almost eight billion people now. Um, and, and it will come. It's inevitable. It's about, you know, really taking the reins and listening. Um, I, I may be redundant, but I don't think we can control the growth um, too much, not too much, but we can control in what direction it goes and just really listening to the residents of Covington and doing and doing that. Um, it, it's super vague. I feel like my, you know, but the way I see it, it's, change is going to come. Um, just, just really doing it with, with everyone in mind and to the, to the best of their requests. That's who we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I guess we will move on. And Commissioner Growth, I will hand it off to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thanks, City Council, for that discussion. I appreciate the open dialogue. Thanks, Chair Williams. Good conversation. So I'll just jump in, uh, take this slide. And before we get to looking ahead at the specifics of the 2022 work plan, I just wanted to take an opportunity to look back at 2021. So as we kind of pause and celebrate the accomplishments of 2021, you can see on this slide a few just data points listed in that blue box. So there were 16 meetings, uh, equals approximately 280 volunteer hours. Obviously, some resiliency to do that in a pandemic, uh, complete these activities in a virtual online environment. Um, and we actually had a very high rate of full commissioner attendance. I think some of that's attributable to the fact that uh, many of us could attend these meetings in a virtual environment if we're out of town, or if we didn't need to commute to City Hall. Uh, so we could log meetings while still managing our home and work environments. Uh, but I think it also talks to that passion for, uh, just being active and being engaged in, in this community. So a high rate of attendance is, is kind of a a great mark. We don't have to worry about quorums in the beginning. That's something other cities do deal with. So I will point out that the list on the right are some of the major accomplishments that we feel we got to achieve in 2021. That handbook, uh, definitely a big one. Uh, it helped with the onboarding process, helps kind of streamline how new commissioners come in. Uh, that was definitely a big win, uh, was we prepared for this presentation. We even talked about moving that one to the top. That, that was really helpful for the Planning Commission. So we also updated the Planning Commission rules and procedures. Uh, we helped the city complete a form-based code that resulted in an updated understanding of the economic trends in downtown Covington. A new form-based code that supports downtown's vision as a compact and pedestrian-friendly business district. A new code section that exempts certain types of downtown construction from environmental review as allowed by, uh, the SEPA recommendations for infrastructure improvements and expansions needed to support the growth of downtown. So that was a good code action that we made that recommendation to move forward with. Also made those same types of reviews and recommendations for, um, 1845 CMC, the tree preservation protection. Uh, those were actually adopted, uh, under ordinance 02 dash 2021, so kind of a good action there. And we also reviewed, made that recommendation for the Planned Action Ordinance and Comp Plan Amendments for Lake Point Urban Village. Also the Development Agreement for Lake Point that was, I believe, approved last month. So those are some of the accomplishments as we, uh, close out the book from 2021 and move to 2022. Thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, uh, Commissioner Gilbert Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. So I'm going to take the next slide and talk about how the Planning Commission evaluated the 2022 work plan as it applies to the following five categories. So first, our legislative requirements. These are activities that require the evaluation and update to the zoning code for comprehensive plan elements resulting from state legislative decisions. Then there's also comprehensive planning. These are activities required to implement the comprehensive plan or prepare the for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. Then there's implementation and efficiency. These are activities that implement code and comprehensive plan updates to provide an identified improvement to a community development department's business processes. There's the Lake Point Subarea Planning. Activities related to the continued implementation of the Lake Point Subarea Plan and Planned Action Ordinance. These activities are developer-driven. And finally, there's the citywide objectives and strategic plan, which aren't currently included. To date, the city is reevaluating the strategic plan. The outcome of the strategic plan may result in additions or reprioritization of the work plan. So the Planning Commission fully anticipates that the work plan will need to be adjusted based on outcomes at the legislative level and the strategic goals and priorities of the city council, city manager, and how those activities cascade to the community development department. That said, we must start somewhere. So as you can see in your packet, we've identified various work efforts under each of these categories. It is anticipated work associated with the comprehensive plan will be the prominent work plan item. In the following slides, staff will provide more detail about these activities.
Great. Thank you.
And I believe, I believe I'll be taking over from that point.
Okay, I will hand it off to you. Thank you.
So this is a brief overview of the 2022 Planning Commission work plan. Uh, this information is provided in your packet, so you've been provided this information previously. Starting off with number one, this is House Bill 1220 implementing zoning regulations and requirements as they relate to temporary housing and, and those efforts in response to House Bill 1220 to 1220, and we're still waiting for the information from the Department of Commerce. So as you see, we'll start beginning that work in quarter number two, and hopefully we'll get that information from Commerce, so we can finalize that moving forward in quarter four. Uh, like Commissioner Gilbert Smith mentioned, 2024 is going to be quite a busy year dealing with the, the updates to the comprehensive plan, getting that all lined up. Uh, that's going to take most of the year and moving into next year as well. Uh, one thing that we did find is there were some discrepancies in how wireless communication facilities are regulated within the city as they compare to the federal regulations. So we're going to go through those and just do some housecleaning efforts just to see if our code is consistent with the federal regulations. I know that there is a, there's a an exemption that was changed by the federal government recently that allows, uh, different exemption criteria. And so we're going to go through that to see if our code matches up with that. Uh, the next portion, where it's going to be quarter number one and two, is working with the Planning Commission onboarding and staffing processes. Uh, number five is an interesting one. We'll be evaluating the 30-lot single access limitation. That'll be in quarter one and quarter two. Uh, from that, we will move on for infill design, because, you know, let's be honest, all the easy buildable lots in Covington have pretty much been built out, so we're going to have these different lots that may have some different challenges, whether they're environmental uh, or other things in that sort. And so we're going to have to come up with some infill design options for single-family residential as they relate to that. Uh, then, you know, throughout the year, we'll look at regular code amendment reviews. Um, those are housekeeping items. Um, those are housekeeping items that, that come up. We keep a, a laundry list of things in the community development department that we, we focus on. We like to get those taken care of in, in order. You know, things come up. You know, sometimes unfortunately that we'll have to take action on. And so those are some of the ways that we can, we can do that. Topic-specific communication, we're going to be focused on through quarter number two through quarter number four. We have our joint PC meeting this evening. Uh, we also have elections in September, uh, that was changed in the, uh, rules and procedures this last year. We'll also be talking about the annual docket process and, uh, commission terms. Next slide, please, Selena. So this is kind of an overview of what the legislative requirements that we see today. Uh, as you'll see later in the city council meeting, uh, there is a proposed ordinance to extend the existing interim regulations uh, in response to House Bill 1220. Uh, as mentioned earlier, we're still waiting for the information or the data from the Department of Commerce. Uh, we can't really provide a, a solid, uh, regulatory scheme moving forward until we have that data provided by them. Uh, that is supposed to happen later this year and we will be working diligently with the planning commission to get that moving forward. Uh, the 2024 comprehensive plan update, uh, we're going to have to do a plan audit and a needs assessment uh, that identifies, you know, parts or areas within the comprehensive plan that we need to focus on, specifically relating to House Bill 1220 and the housing elements. Uh, in some of the policy emphasis or lens, lenses, if you would, under Vision 2050 specifically related to consistency evaluation, uh, equity, climate resistance, transit-oriented development, housing and transportation. Uh, this will provide us with a roadmap to complete the updates, including our public engagement process. And as mentioned already, we are talking about wireless communication facilities and adjusting some of the updated codes from 2019. With that, I believe I'm turning it over to Selena now.
So I'm going to take a quick pause here. Is there any questions from the council about these work plan items or what we've put before you tonight? Great. Okay, so I'll move on here. So the other, the other aspect that we included in your, in your packet in your discussion tonight was the, um, 2022 Community Development Work Plan. And community development's a little bit unique and, and I don't know that there's any of the other departments that do the same kind of work plan layout, um, such that we do with, with the, with the city council. So what, what I did, uh, what we decided to do was to include the community development work plan in there just for a purpose of understanding kind of the breadth and the width of all of the work that we have in front of us for 2022. So when you look in your packet, um, we've categorized our work plan, um, the same as we did the planning commission. The majority of the work that we have ahead of us is really focused in that legislative requirement. Um, so what are those things that we really need to do, right? So these are things, these are the musts, these are the should or the shells, um, and, and along with that comprehensive plan. Um, community development this year, we are trying and, and doing our best to make space um, for the implementation and efficiency activities. And so for the community development department, what that looks like is, you know, are there, are there processes that where we can start to do some updates, right? Getting more customer-focused? And, um, in, especially in this hybrid environment, right? So we were very kind of paper-heavy. How can we transition into kind of the way that we're moving, um, forward in, in technology? Um, also the thing too that we, we tend to run into or we, it's, it's a gap for us is that we will adopt all these great codes and policies, right? And then we kind of fall short in the implementation piece. And what I mean by that is are there documents that need to be updated? Do we need to be communicating this information out to our stakeholders and, and the folks that do business with Covington? Do we need to, um, kind of, you know, do kind of a little mini assessment of other, other sections of the code that we may have failed to carry some things through? And these are activities, um, while it's very important and so oftentimes the hardest part of the process. Um, when, you know, you're doing a lot of stuff, sometimes we don't provide space for that. So that is something kind of in my capacity is coming in as director is trying to create a little bit of space and a little bit of gap for the team to be able to kind of pull these code requirements all the way through so that we're doing really good customer service at the end of the day with, with what we've adopted. Um, Lake Point Subarea Plan, that is completely driven by, um, Oak Point and their development team. So we always want to leave a little bit of space for them. Um, but right now we're anticipating since the adoption of the development agreement that we're not going to, um, have too much hopefully coming at us in 2022, but, but we'll find out. And then just also giving a nod to the strategic plan, um, that the council's working on. Um, we know that those priorities are going to, you know, define where we want to head and then we'll, we'll need to kind of cascade that information and work down to our department, which could result in additional work for the planning commission or, or change the direction potentially in some areas. Um, so as Ryan had mentioned, you know, and, and Commissioner Gilbert Smith, Smith, our biggest takeaway and I, what I foresee our biggest task is going to be the comprehensive plan, um, update. And you'll see in the documents we provided you for the community development department, um, oh, there's going to be a lot of pre-work, right? So we, we, we need, we need to get very clear about where we are going to focus our energy. Um, we need to get very clear about what, uh, parts of the comprehensive plan that we need to update. And then developing a roadmap of kind of how we anticipate to get that work done by 2024, as well as how do we bring the public along, right? This comprehensive plan is kind of what we were talking about earlier. It's going to help define and provide guidelines for the growth and, and success of Covington. So there's, there's a lot of pre-work that staff's going to be doing on the front end, um, to, to kind of set us up for that. I do have transportation concurrency listed here. This is kind of an ongoing, um, work plan item. We're always looking at how do we manage traffic? How do we manage and measure trips? Um, you know, especially as we're growing, right? So how, how do we start to kind of think about that and, and evaluate that, um, you know, and, and how that fits in kind of to the regional, uh, the regional model. Um, and then we talked about the implementation efficiency and Lake Point Subarea Plan. Um, one thing that I just kind of want to mention to the council, um, that we shared with the planning commission or, you know, is that, um, sorry here. Is that, you know, right now, community development, we are, we are lean and mighty and we are doing a lot of work. Um, we've got a lot of development in, but we are short on staff. I've got about four vacancies that we need to fill. And most of that's in our current planning division. So Brian and Ryan are really stepping up and, and carrying a lot of the weight of the development review. Um, and I say that because, because that also plays into how we prioritize our work in community development. So, um, you know, as we move into 2022, we have great visions and dreams for all the work that we're going to accomplish. And our amazing planning commission actually kind of challenged us, challenged us on this, you know, when we presented this in January and to make sure that, you know, we're thinking about our resource needs and our timings. So I appreciate that of our planning commission to be mindful of, of where we are today. Um, so things that we're going to do kind of as far as prioritization, obviously based on staff ability, we're going to give preference to, to requirements under the RCW. So like this is development review timelines, things that we have to meet a deadline on. So maybe a legislative requirement comes at us that we were unforeseen. We're, we're ready to roll through that. Um, obviously council and city manager priorities will be a priority and then, um, any additional legislative mandates. One thing that I learned, so I don't know if most of you knew this, but when I came on, I did one-on-one interviews with each of the planning commission members, which was really insightful and really helpful and actually kind of drove the presentation that we have tonight. But one of the requests that they all shared in common, uh, there was a handful of them, but, but kind of the two big takeaways were, you know, request for more transparency. And what they meant by that and what I understood that to mean is like, you know, kind of around why are we doing this work? What is the purpose, right? Being very clear on what it is that we're driving towards. Um, and so staff, we're going to be kind of flexing our muscles this year and getting a little bit better about maybe putting together a little more detailed work plans, trying to bring the planning commission along on that work that we have and really using them more as a resource and extension of staff. So that is kind of where we want to go. We have to, you know, learn to do those things along the way, but, um, that is a shared, a shared goal and vision that, that community development and planning commission have. Um, so I will just stop there and see if there's any questions or comments, um, that, that we want to discuss. And I'll, I'll let, uh, Mayor Wagner and, uh, Commissioner Williams kind of manage that.
Does anybody have any questions for Selena? And I apologize for cutting the conversation off earlier. I just wanted to make sure that we got through everything, so. Feel free to ask questions. Jennifer.
Hi, thanks. I didn't really have, um, any questions. I just wanted to say that I, you know, I thought the presentation was really, it felt really collaborative and deliberate and thorough and, uh, wanted to, to let you all know that it, it's outstanding. And to echo, um, what Sean and Beth were saying earlier, we do rely upon you a lot on council. Um, you'll hear us ask, and I remember us asking repeatedly, um, at the, at the meeting where we were deliberating the tree code. Did Planning Commission approve this? You know, we, we, we always ask, we want to know because we value your opinion so much. So um, I, I just wanted to say thank you for this presentation and thank you for your continuous good work.
Any other questions or comments? So going back to Darren's question where he asked what we as council were asking as well, does anybody want to continue with that? Murray, I'll turn this back over to you.
Okay, um, yeah, that, uh, that was pretty much all that I had this evening. Um, do any of the commissioners, uh, have anything that they would like to bring up and discuss? No? Okay. Well, uh, Selena, oh, Darren, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry, I didn't do it right away, but you opened the door. I apologize. You've learned now as being chair on the planning commission. I'm going to try to walk through that, but I, just a- as somebody that, that does this on kind of both sides, I, I really appreciated council member, uh, I don't want to say the last name, but the last comment was, was fantastic. Okay, Jennifer's comments, um, it, it was, it was great to watch, uh, Selena go from meeting with us individually to helping us put this together, to, to staffing the efforts, to deliberately talking about it at the meetings. We, we have seen the, the kind of short-staffedness and, and watched as, as Ryan is pulling his hair out at these meetings, wondering like, oh, man, h- how are we, how are we balancing all this? So just as a planning commissioner that has possibly some, some inside information as to how you do make that sausage, I, I just wanted to say thanks for those comments and, and I sure hope that you do realize this was a lot of staff, that it was really driven by them, that, that our work plan wants to be here, uh, if it wasn't for the effort that they're putting in. So uh, both Ryan and Selena and Daphne helps us in the planning commission meetings as well, but uh, every time I've sent an email or made a phone call, it's responded to, not only as a commissioner, but as a citizen, it, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity. And again, just proud to say that I'm a part of Covington and watching what you guys are doing, but it is really led by uh, what Selena's vision has brought to the city. So just wanted to take a moment to applaud that and give you my circle of applause or round of applause there and, and say, great job.
And if I can add something to that to follow up, um, I had mentioned this last week at the meeting, but I'm realizing after hearing what Darren's saying, or sorry, Commissioner Growth, I'm always so used to unfersing pieces with everyone, um, that, um, although this has been very staff-driven, um, I feel like this has been, uh, because like I said, I did go back and check. I guess I've been on the commission now eight and a half, almost nine years. And so it's been a long time. There's been a lot of change. I feel like it's all been good experience. Um, but for the first time, actually, I feel like staff, this time in putting together the work plan, really involved the commission. Um, although it was staff-driven with the PowerPoint presentation, obviously, which is obviously very professional. Um, we were very involved in the process and I had, um, thanked Selena for that last week, but wanted to do it in front of the city council now to make sure in case it isn't necessarily obvious that there was a different process behind it this year, there definitely was. And I really appreciate that process.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with that completely and, and echo it. Um, yeah, I don't think that I have anything left. It sounds, looks like the commissioners are I've said there, there are pieces. Uh, Selena?
Yeah, and, and I, I would love to give everyone back a gift of time, um, but I
Thought you might.
I know, I love doing that. That's my favorite thing. Um, but in, in just knowing that we have maybe a couple of minutes, I'm Regan, I'm going to maybe put you on the spot a little bit, if that's okay. Um,
It depends on what you ask.
Yeah, so let me ask my question. You can, you can deny me. Um, it might be helpful for the planning commission to kind of hear where we are with the strategic plan, if that's something that we can kind of give them just a quick bullet points on. Um, because we all know, I mean, we're showing you something tonight and it, and it'll be interesting to kind of future that, right? We're here today. Where are we going to be? You know, six or eight months from now, it'll be, see how well we hit those targets. But I'd love for them to hear kind of what you're thinking on as far as timing of strategy and all that good stuff.
Uh, I don't have a timeline. Um, so the first part of the strategic plan is developing, uh, goals, right? Um, and the vision and mission, the council adopted those, uh, about a month ago. And so, um, now what, what we're starting to work on is, um, and we'll start this at the staff level and then start branching out, but creating objectives for each of those goals. And then underneath those actionable items. So it's, it's really premature to give any timeline or discuss kind of where it's at, but the process will be just like it was in the one we created about, I think, four years ago. Uh, in working with, with the leadership team and city council for ultimate adoption of, of the objectives and goals underneath each or action items underneath each, um, each goal that they just established in January.
Thank you, Regan.
Anything else, Selena?
Nope, I, that can, I think, you know, looking at the planning commission, this was just a really great opportunity for us to come before you. Um, we'll obviously be working together throughout the rest of the year. Um, I don't have anything more from a staff perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Selena Murray. Is there anything else or anybody in the planning commission?
Anyone?
And councils, any other questions or comments? I just want to say thank you, um, to each of you on the planning commission for all your hard work, um, echoing what Sean and Beth and everybody else has said that you are the first line of defense. You do a great job of, of, um, going through all the heavy lifting to bring stuff to council for, um, debate. And like Jennifer said, we did keep asking, um, did planning commission go through this and everything to make sure that what was being brought to us? So I know you, you do a lot of hard work and you may not get the kudos that you deserve, but you definitely deserve all the the kudos and thanks, uh, for everything that you do, um, uh, behind the scenes to bring it forward to make Covington what it is. So thank you, each of you for all the hard work you do. I guess with that, um, at 6:50, we will take a 10-minute break and, um, come back at seven o'clock for our council meeting. And I hope that each of you have a very good meeting or good evening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.